A lot of information to get through. You had some in your packet, but I'll try to go through. I'll start at the beginning and when I get to the end, I'll stop and I'll try to go through as succinctly as possible. So we have plenty of time to circle back and go over the details. So just going to overview of programs, current potential new programs, what's going on with our various projects? And then obviously that leads into discussions on funding options and really looking for a discussion with these, with the boards and really to get, you know, guidance and feedback on how the board feels they want to prioritize and move forward. But just as a reminder for everybody, we do have a community housing plan and this was put together for the FY as part of the FY twenty-three budget. I'm happy to report that, you know, we, we are planning the work and we're working the plan. And we have completed a number of important items. Pretty much everything that we outlined in the plan has been completed or in progress in one form or another. But I think the most important part, I think, was when we put this plan together, you know, Jackie put the plan together and it really helped focus the attention on housing and really help better coordinate, at least on the staff level, how we're looking at this. So, you know, the town manager, finance department, my department, housing and the housing trust, a lot more consolidate, a lot more consolidated and coordinated over the past few years. And that's what's led to, you know, the progress we have made. So that was a big step forward in how we kind of looked at things comprehensively. So programs, as I mentioned, we have, we do have a community housing plan. That plan outlined a number of programs and initiatives. As part of that FY twenty-three budget, we had outlined some funding sources, which came from free cash from the Article Four of that town meeting, which was approved. And basically this, this slide is really just outlining that the, the programs we had put together and what we had earmarked for potential funding, at least startup funding for each program. So some money has been spent, but there's still, a lot of it is still there. So there is flexibility and, you know, again, tonight's discussion and going forward, there is flexibility in how we want to talk about funding. If we want to keep things where they are or start to move some things around based on priorities. And that was nine hundred thousand dollars, which was the Article Four funds. So we're currently running two housing programs, the rental assistance program and the emergency housing emergency loan program, the HELP program. These have been pretty solid programs for us. We've been running them both for over twelve years. Rental assistance basically provides a monthly subsidy to income qualifying applicants, helps them with the gap funding for the, to meet their monthly rent. There is a case management and a financial planning assistance component, which is a key piece of that. So to help folks get themselves in order. So when they kind of graduate out of the, it's a three-year program. So when the three years run their, runs their course or sooner, they have more solid financial footing to graduate out of the program. And same thing with the emergency loan program, forgivable loans to help with major repairs to housing. And that's key for us. Again, the two, these two programs really focus on, you know, rent rental housing, which is the single biggest need we have. And then the homeownership piece, keeping people in homes, making sure they're safe. So again, these programs have been effective as part of the housing plan. One of the initiatives was to try to increase enrollment in those programs and increase the funding limits, which we have. So we did put town funds. These programs have been primarily funded through CPA funding. So there is a limit to eligibility for the affordability levels. But we did put town funds through the Article Four money so that we can increase that to take care of folks that were above the hundred percent AMI. So really the goal going forward is to make sure we maximize the enrollment in those. And we've been working with our regional housing partners to try to make sure the words out on these programs. So potential new housing programs, and there's a few of them. And I'm just going to go through kind of very briefly, high-level overview. So least the locals is a program we've been looking at. Basically provides cash incentives to property owners to convert their unit, their housing into year-round rentals. So this is a program that it could bring in new rentals, but it also could be a key program to help win back some of the rentals we've lost to the short-term market. Try to level the playing field and provide an incentive, a financial incentive to lure folks back to start renting year-round again. So again, it could, could work well with existing properties, it could work well with a single-family homes, with ADUs. And this could actually play into some of the other programs that we want to do, like the ADU Assistance Program, which I'll talk about in a minute. Again, housing plan, we did earmark some funds that could be used for, potentially for starting up a pilot program. We've been looking at other implicated, other applications of this. Province Town has had a good success with their year-one pilot program. They actually created nineteen, nineteen units, Nantucket, similar program. They created twenty-two units and they actually have a waiting list of property owners who want to sign on to the program. So that's encouraging. So we are looking at this to see, we're talking with software company that administers the program for those two towns, seeing how it could work for Eastham. We're talking with Orleans to see, we think this could be a good match for inter-town partnership to maximize program. Also, it would help us possibly cut down on the administrative costs around the program. So we're in the midst of discussions with Orleans on that and looking at what the program guidelines would be. And that would be something to bring back to the board as a follow-up to see really how that program would flesh out. The ADU Assistance Program, again, identified in the housing plan. This would be a program that would provide pre-development funds for folks that are looking to create an ADU, pre-development funds and also post-development. So we've had some pretty good success with the ADU bylaw that we overhauled a few years ago. We've, we have permitted a number of ADUs, which is great. Have encountered a lot of folks that want to do the ADU. They have, they have the septic capacity. They have, they have the land for it. But they just run into financial financing problems. So again, this would be assistance upfront. You need a septic plan. You need some building plans, whatever it might be, a site plan. Funding upfront. And then if you complete the ADU and you are agreeing to deed restrict, deed restricted for a year on rental, it would be a post-assistance to defray the development cost. And then this program, again, some earmarked money for a startup program. We're looking at developing some guidelines or we have some draft guidelines and potentially could roll this out for twenty-twenty-five. Nice tie-in to this is that the Cape Cod Commission is working on a program that will provide basically pre-approved housing plans, basically be, you know, free plans that are, that are architectural plans that meet building code, energy code, everything. So they basically be made free. The towns could basically adopt them and, you know, we could have a scenario with a planning board kind of vets them. So that it streamlines, potentially streamlines the regulatory process if you do have to go through the boards, but also one less component to apply for. So we could, that'd be a great tie-in with this program.
So just a quick, can I ask a quick question about the pre-development funds? Is that tied to a deed restriction or only the other ones, only the post-development?
I don't, I don't know if we, how we.
Be a grant.
Okay.
No deed restriction.
Okay. Only if you really take money for construction.
So the, our get-back is the plans that they might get from a septic planning of site plans for community development department to use in the future if they needed them.
So the town will retain.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
So then we would, yeah. And that information is, you know, important for our wastewater planning and for, you know, future land use development. So we know what capacity those properties would have.
Okay.
Sorry, Jamie.
Is there any restriction for the applicant for this program as far as AMI goes?
For the ADU assistance?
Yeah.
No, we're trying to make it so there isn't. It depends on the funding source. So if we use town funds, it can be basically open-ended. But if there were folks that wanted to put a affordability restriction on it, we could tap into Housing Trust or CPA fund.
Oh, but if we put a restriction on the ADU?
Right.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah. So the restriction would be, we want the year on rental, but if they're willing to do an affordability restriction.
He's two.
You could, you could tap into some other CPA funds.
But then that's on the deed.
Right.
Yeah. Next program is the Affordable Housing Tax Exemption. So this is a new legislative tool that the state put into place. It is available. I think a few other towns have, have started with it. Basically would allow a property tax exemption to owners that are willing to rent year-round at affordable rates. It is available to implement, although I think, and Rich will be able to speak more to this point on the follow-up. But I think there are some questions still need to be evaluated as to how it would fit for Eastham. Just on the staff level, we talked through, we think maybe this isn't the best program for Eastham now. I'll circle back to this when we get to the recommendations. But it basically, it's another tool in the housing toolbox that, that may or may not be a good fit at this point.
Paul, just speak to it quickly now. So Province Town and I believe Wellfleet have something similar, but it's special legislation approved many years ago, which affords them a lot of flexibility. There was a lot of promise and hope that this new legislation would be a lot of flexibility locally if you decide how you want to run it. And so that's why originally I promoted it as an opportunity. But then following through with Department of Revenue Attorneys, it turns out that a lot of that flexibility really isn't what, isn't what we need it to be. And so this probably, if you were to adopt it, would represent an outlay of money that would be helpful longer term perhaps for people that are doing rentals, but it's not going to be creating any new rentals right now. And that is our priority. So and there'd be, you know, the large developments in town would get an outsized benefit from participating in this type of exemption. So we theoretically could be spending a lot of money and not gaining any new units.
Gotcha.
Thanks, Rich. Next program is called Rooted Renters. And this is kind of a companion piece in some ways to the least the locals program. So it would, again, like least the locals provide a financial incentive to, to owners that would be renting year-round. But this would be targeted to the folks that are already renting year-round to kind of bring them into, into the equation. Again, would we, I'm sorry, just, did you want to?
Just wanted to add to that, the rooted renters, another component of that is if we wanted to do this is to do a long-term rent and require two or three years so that somebody isn't displaced or after a year. So it would be, it could work with the least to locals and ADU and potentially funds for a long-term rental after that.
And with this, if they're offering below-market rates, they would be eligible for maybe some trust money?
Yes, for rental assistance.
But it wouldn't deed restrict anything?
No.
It's interesting.
It's really kind of the alternative to the affordable housing tax exemption, which has some prescribed methodologies, whereas the rooted renters is pretty much the same thing, but we get to target it to where we want. And it goes hand in hand with the, these two locals where we, these locals creates new units only. And then the rooted renters comes along after the fact to hopefully keep them that way and keep incentivizing.
Do we have an understanding of how many people are renting below the market rate currently?
No.
It says, who offer below-market rate rental housing?
Probably zero.
The rent would have to be a below-market rate rent in order to qualify for this program.
So how do you determine market rate?
No, I was just asking if we have any of those existing in Eastham currently or if we know that or not.
I don't know that.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine.
I, I know of at least one. A local person who created an ADU and is intentionally below-market rate renting it because they felt like that was the right thing to do. So I know of one, there's one.
Okay.
I guess I just add, Paul, since that's a local program, we get to decide on like the housing tax exemption. So right here, we're contemplating below-market rate, but if we're using local dollars, we can set that rate. Determine those regulations through the select board and the Housing Trust.
Well, local market rate is, is determined by HUD.
Well, there's, there's affordability guidelines for affordable housing. So we could use them as a guideline.
But local market rate in general is determined by the market, right?
Right. It's just HUD has some ways of doing some calculations. So we, we can't just, we don't just make it up out of the air, kind of.
All right. The other program is deed restriction for year-round workers. I know we talked about this a couple of years ago initially. Program modeled after similar ones that are taking place in, out in Belle, Colorado, a few other places across the country. Basically, program would allow a town or a county, depending on how it's rolled out, to purchase deed restrictions from homeowners. And then that would allow us to permanently limit occupancy to make sure that it's for employees of the, of the local town or county. This Community Development Partnership, CDP, is in the midst of doing an analysis to see if this, how this would work as a model for the Outer Cape, see if it could be a regional model. We anticipate there'll be a report on that forthcoming fairly soon. So.
Yeah, their last workshop on it was in April. And when I contacted Andrea recently, she said they should have something out by October. So right about now, they should be.
Have you heard any like ballpark figures of maybe what a deed restriction would cost to purchase from?
Well, the, I can, we can send out before our next meeting, we can send out the April snapshot. But it, it, I don't know if that'll be come through in the final recommendations, which is what the consultant is working on now.
Is that something that would be to existing homeowners? So it wouldn't be in like a transfer. So if you owned your home and you wanted two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars or whatever to have, but it would then make your house deed restricted when it goes to sale. I mean.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's an interesting program. We're just waiting for more info about how viable it would be for the Outer Cape.
I had thought about it in when properties transfer, like when there's a sale, if the town could have a program that offered to purchase a deed restriction for it, which is whatever, six of one, half dozen of the other.
Yeah. So the last two programs, Housing Buy Down Program and Mortgage Down Payment, these are kind of two, you know, classic housing assistance programs, again, included in the housing plan. Some funding potentially earmarked out of the Article Four money that could be used to start up the program. We've looked at this over the years. The Housing Trust has looked at this. We have not decided to move forward on it. Just basically, just the escalation of the housing market coming out of COVID just seemed to make this not viable for the amount of money we'd have to put into it. The return on, you know, the, the amount of, the amount of units we could do just didn't seem to make a good fit at this, at this point in time. Although, you know, like I said, it's, it's, they're great programs. It's just the timing doesn't seem to be right with where we are. And I, and in fact, Rachel was talking with, Wellfleet has a similar program and they found that they just had to release, they weren't able to make much of a dent. And, you know, I mean, obviously every, everyone you create is, is a great, is a great success story. But just, you know, the use of funds doesn't seem to pan out. So I think they've kind of scaled back their.
So post-COVID, Wellfleet increased their amount to a hundred and seventy-five thousand and found that that wasn't enough. And so they haven't, haven't gone really forward with the program at this time.
What part of, one of the other members of the trust who's not here tonight? Oh, you are. Okay.
Which, which actually now, now that you have three, you should call your meeting to your board to order. Cause I'm, I'm sitting up here, so I'm not really part of you right now.
An official meeting, right? So I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Eastham Affordable Housing Trust. The meeting's being recorded. It will be available on the town's website, eastham-ma.gov. And it's also on Channel Eight. One of the things we talked about at one of our recent meetings is that as interest rates start to fall, then that might make the, the housing buy-down program and the rental assistance program available, helpful for families who are right on the edge of affordability. So not housing trust money because that's, the AMI is too low. But for that workforce housing folks, there, there might be opportunities as interest rates start to come down. So we're trying to kind of keep a pulse on that and, and watch for that. I know Jeff has talked about that, that there, there, there are sometimes families that, that little, not little, but large bit would make a difference. And to spend a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars on a deed restricted property versus six hundred thousand dollars to build a property, it starts to be a trade-off that's worth keeping our finger and pulse on to, to watch for.
The mic so they can hear you?
So it, it does seem that if, if we could make the, the logistics of the deed restriction work. And I think there, there are plenty of, of candidates and buyers who would, who would be quite happy to have a deed restriction and, you know, accept whatever equity would come their way over the course of time. In terms of the creation of a unit of affordable housing, it, it seems, even if it had to be something on the order of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand to sort of qualify someone for that sweet spot whereby two or a local family could qualify from an income standpoint. In terms of the creation of a unit and then not having to keep the unit in the program and keep it managed with our resources in terms of town government. I think there's a very good argument for both the viability and the economic feasibility of, of creating affordable housing that way. So that's something I, I do kind of feel strongly about.
Do you want comments now? Okay, make a comment. No.
I'd rather get through the presentation and then talk about it when we're talking about pros and cons.
Okay, okay, sure. I'm, sorry, I don't mean to. Oh, no, that's fine. But I didn't know we were going to do questions as we moved through this. So can I go back to the beginning and ask a question?
They were saying at the end, we're doing questions.
We just did questions as we went.
Yeah, but we're, we're, right now, it's kind of slowing down.
And we won't do questions as we go.
The presentation and then go through.
Go back and ask what options.
So, yeah, I should, I should have made that clear. So.
It is, every single one of these has great potential, but we have no funding source for any of them. So that, you know, we have to think about that as we go along. We only have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars at this moment.
All right. So that, that rounds out the overview of the, of the programs. I just want to transition over to overview of what's going on with housing projects. So we have five-eighty Massasoit Road. This was a strategic purchase in twenty-twenty-two. It allowed us to take control of this property. It's historic property. It's iconic property in town. So it really did two things, allowed us to, you know, keep the integrity of that historic property for a community character purposes, but it also allowed us to retain, there's an existing rental unit on the second floor. So we would, we'd retain an existing unit and also the third floor has potential to bring onto it as an additional new unit. So we are, we did receive CPA funds last year. So it's a, it's a historic rehab prop project combined with a housing development project. We have funding to get started with the refit of the exterior for historic. We've conducted a building code analysis. We have architected it's done for the first and second floor, some cost estimates. And like I said, some CPA funding to get us started. We need to do some further evaluation on the third floor build-out. And we would look, we would be looking to get some supplemental CPA funds to finish the, finish out the funding to move forward with that. So we are looking to get some bid specifications adequate to go out to bid, get some real cost estimates that would inform the next round of CPA funding. Salt Pond Condos. Also the, the Del Gizi Properties, which you are familiar with. Again, a strategic acquisition that we're pursuing. We currently, the town currently owns, so there's two, there's two, two buildings, two duplex units, four units total. The town owns half of each building. So we own one unit in each building. The, this is a, this is a, in my opinion, a very strategic property to acquire. And it has a potential for multiple units. If we could, if we could get control of the whole property and look strategically at how the units are used, how the interiors are laid out. And so there's a potential to add units here. It's also very strategic for our wastewater. It'd be a location to site a sewer pump station as part of the wastewater infrastructure. And also an area, an area where we would look to do stormwater mitigation, which is critical for the Salt Pond, which is right across the street. So again, this is kind of a really strategic property that will serve a number of purposes. So we are, we've completed it. So really where we're going with this is how do we, how do we get possession of the entire property so that we can move things forward? So we've completed a property appraisal and a title search. Obviously ongoing, we, town staff is doing, let's say, a heroic job at maintaining the units and keeping things afloat over there until we can really get control of the whole thing and, and do what's needed, take a comprehensive approach. But really the big thing is just acquisition of the remaining units. And we would be looking to take steps towards that for town meeting this coming May. And again, that, that'll set the stage for how do we really utilize the maximum potential for this property. Two-five-five-five State Highway, which is the Beach Palm Motel right across the street from us here at Town Hall. Again, another strategic purchase, similar to Massasoit. The, the front building there is a historic house. So we're able to retain control of the property, preserve that historic house, which also gave us a year-round rental. It's currently occupied. It also provides an opportunity to convert the motel units in the back to new rental units. And we, we're doing that through the new motel, motel hotel conversion zoning by law that we passed a couple of years ago. That's the mechanism that allows for this to happen. So we've done some work here. The site has a brand-new innovative alternative septic system. We've completed a preliminary design, so we contracted with a local architect. We have preliminary designs for some new units that could be in the back. What you're looking at on the side of the screen are some renderings. And I have a couple of more visuals on the next slide, but there's basically two options, different configurations. There's a, there's a one, one building configuration and a two-building configuration. Really discussions need to be had on the affordability. So if we move forward this, what's the affordability level for those units? Is it going to be, you know, work, workforce attainable or more deed restricted housing? Obviously the funding source, preliminary estimates to do the construction, this would be, is coming in at about two-point-five million. And again, as we talk about a lot of the, the, the properties that we have, you know, the bigger questions about what do we do? Do we keep them? Do we redevelop them on our own? Do we partner with somebody? Do we retain them? Do we try to sell them and make sure we have the property controls in place? So all these things are kind of on the table for discussion. Looking towards the next step, so we would need to identify funding to do the full design plans. If we do move forward with these, with these housing options, we would look to bring the final. We would look to bring the final designs back to the select board and we can get some preliminary feedback from the board tonight if you choose. And obviously, meeting with the abutters is an important piece of that. And then just from a regulatory standpoint. It would, this would require a. Special permit through the zoning board of appeals to complete the conversion from motel use to back to a residential use. So we've kind of just take a quick pause to show you. So we have option A and option B, and these are some renderings. Option A. Is basically. I don't know if that's showing up, but what you're looking on the top, top left is that's the existing house. That that you can see from the road and this option would be for. One new building that would be in the back, basically where roughly the same footprint where the motel units are. And this would provide us with two studio apartments and two one bedroom apartments that would basically be fitting in the footprint where the. Motel units are. And I think the architect's done a nice job at trying to blend in the site, make it match with the existing architecture. Option B. Is a two building option. Again, this would give us a smaller cottage that would be sited in front. Kind of slightly in front of the existing house and then another building in the back. And this would provide us with two studios and then two one bedroom apartments. And again, this all fits in with the septic. Capacity and we think, you know, both options fit nicely into the into the site, could integrate well. But really, at this point. You know, staff's been evaluating, but obviously we want to get feedback from the board and. Kind of move forward when the time comes on how you want to move forward with this, but. So that just gives you a little. Preview of what the visuals might be. So other items. Wanted to try to weave in some other things that are related to housing in general and. Uh, Jack, you wanted to make some comments about how the. Build Center Master Plan and Tea Time kind of weave into this.
So basically, I just wanted to add Tea Time and Town Center Plaza. Are are hopefully larger housing developments of new units into this mix. And talk about obviously what's been completed, what's in progress and. Looks like the Form Based Code zoning hopefully is moving forward for May Town Meeting. The financial analysis, we have a draft of that that Paul is working with the consultants to make final and bring to you. We are in process of integrating wastewater plans into the future capacity and decisions about this. And working with the DOT to address the traffic issues. So our next step would be obviously public discussions with you. After all the analysis are completed and the zoning is complete and the way in, we now have some. Answers on the wastewater side as well, so that would be good. And then to generate requests for proposals for development. And at our last meeting on the master plan, Bob had asked, you know, if wastewater doesn't pass, can we still develop housing at Tea Time and Town Center Plaza? And Hillary and I went through each site plan. We looked at the. Site plan for the original Stratford development. We looked at the current zoning. We looked at the potential zoning. And so the answer is yes. But what Hillary would recommend is a package treatment plant that would connect both the sites. Because Town Center Plaza is highly limited on what we could do without wastewater. So we'd have to do the package treatment plant and the development of that would be very similar to the development of our wastewater plant. So we would have to have, you know, design and engineering, then we'd have to take easements and then we'd have to, you know, build something. And I'm not sure it's possible that we could do all of that, say, within two years. And so if wastewater doesn't pass, we could take money and put it into that. But I wouldn't recommend you, nor would she, doing that until we know about wastewater. Because right now we could connect the whole parcel to the wastewater system and that would be the simplest way to go. And the honestly, we think the most cost effective over time because having two, sorry. Having two septic treatment plants to manage is going to be much more difficult than just one. So but the answer, the short answer is yes, we can do it without wastewater. It just, it it will require another engineering process to. Create wastewater in that area. And part of the reason why, I know people, this, none of this makes sense to people because. We we want, and I do too, we want things to be easy and simple and they're not. And they're just not. And the the whole Tea Time site is in the zone two for our public water system. So to do septic in the zone two of a public water system adds a whole level of treatment and. A level of treatment means a level of expense. So we just have to keep that in mind when it's the reason why it's not the recharge area for our wastewater treatment. But I wanted to answer that question for you, Bob, because I think it it's an excellent one and I know it's one that the community will ask. And so the answer is yes, but it would require another process that is not necessarily going to be less expensive.
Want, want to follow up on that or do you want to keep going?
A quickie? We can keep going.
Go ahead.
I'll just keep going. So that's it. That's all I wanted to just bring to you tonight, because of course, you know, we're going to be back. We can't do this in one night. It's clear, so. Back to you, Paul.
Alright, thank you. So kind of hovering above all of this is. The new state legislation, the Affordable Homes Act. Which went into effect in August. There's a lot of potential here. There's a lot of funding. There's a lot of policies. There's a lot of good stuff. Like I said, there's a lot of potential, but I, in my opinion, there's also more questions and answers. At this point.
Right now.
So. And and a few months ago, I think the last housing update we did, I I had a chart that kind of went through, here's our housing plan. Here's where. You think things might, you know, the this program could be used to bolster this and that. I think all of that still applies, but it's just, we just still need the details about how the money would flow, the mechanism. What the mechanisms would be and so forth, so. We are hopeful that details will be provided by the state. I know that they are planning to, well, I guess I'll say. At this point, I think for us, the two. Big things are in this, in this act, in this legislation, it creates this seasonal communities designation. And at this point, based on what we understand, Eastham would automatically. Qualify as this and that opens up some of these tools, some of these policies and potential funding, which could be key for us. We just need to have more, more details and I believe. The state is going to be having some help. Help documents and some workshops in December, I think. Is that right, Rachel? As far as we know.
Some guidelines and guidance will be coming out by December fifteen.
So that'll help us get a better handle on it, but like right now, we're just kind of trying to monitor as best we can and get information. There's been a lot of workshops, Rachel sat in on a lot of meetings, a lot of workshops, the state's having them. Hacks having them, all the, all the different and.
We're going to one next week.
We're going to one next week, so. Not all the information has been the same, so depending on what you're hearing from town to town, it's it's different, so. I guess we'll just leave it at, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of potential. We just need to figure out how we would be able to plug into it. And it, but I do think everything we've talked about, all these programs, I think there's a place for them. It will align somehow, some way with what the state is doing. So seasonal communities will be huge for us. The other big takeaway, I think at this point is just there is some zoning. Items that we will need to address locally to make sure that we are in alignment with what the state has done. Notably, we'll need to do some kind of housekeeping. Items with our accessory dwelling unit by law. I think we're in good shape generally, but there's just some. Details that we need to make sure definitions and things of that sort. So that will be on the list for May Town Meeting as well. Some other items, some other, other items. Wanted to give you an up update on some things that we've been working on, particularly Rachel. She's been working. Very hard on creating a draft affirmative fair housing marketing plan. And this is basically a guideline or a plan that guides how we, how we address. Rent up, renting up new units in the future that come online and I guess, Rach, do you want to just give an overview or?
Yeah, you've pretty much covered it. It's just, it's, it gives us guidance, so we have a transparent process. On how we select new tenants utilizing a lottery process. It is consistent with state guidelines for affordable housing. It can't really be finalized until we have specifics such as unit details and pricing and affordability levels.
Are there? So this comes in.
Just a quick question, but I know a lot of people talk about local, you know, opt or local options for.
Local preference.
Preference, that's it.
Yeah, this isn't. That local preference is for a bigger developments. I don't know that that will come into play here.
This is for managing what we have or what we build.
Well, even when we build, I think people would like to see local people get some sort of preference in. No?
It's not legal, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's something we can get some legal guidance on. I think it's. Martha's Vineyard tried to do this as well, trying to get some answers as to how that ended up with them, but it is a fair housing issue.
Even though it's a town owned.
Yes. Yeah, so we're looking for more guidance on that.
Yeah.
I mean, we can play with the affordability piece, the rent piece, the that. Yeah, but you can't decide you're going to give preference to.
People that live in the town where the property is.
Although, although.
Makes sense.
Although there is.
You'd have first dibs at the lottery. I mean, you know, you'd be here, you'd get the info, you'd.
Right, but once the lottery ends and then there's turnover, it's gone.
We, no, no, no. We do lot, we would continue to do, this is the process that we'll use every time there's an.
Lottery would establish. A waitlist, so you could do a waitlist from there. You don't have to do a lottery every single time.
I'm sorry.
But the, and the other piece of this is. Waiting for guidance from the state on one of the seasonal community pieces is allowing for municipal workers. A preference. So.
Okay.
There is that. I just don't know what that looks like at this time.
Well, that makes me feel a little better.
I don't know.
New firefighter, their police officers or.
I mean, I just, it's. It's hard to prioritize a program that doesn't prioritize Eastham. Well, you don't, you don't have to right now.
Yeah.
No one's asking you.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah. Not to, not to discredit all of the work that's been going into all of this at all, because I know that it's all important and it all has a place. Just to advocate for the residents in town, you know.
And it's really to advocate for the region, Jamie, really.
Yeah, you're right. It's not just.
If you were already a resident in town, then you'd have a place to live and.
Right.
You might not need most of these programs.
And I think that's where the seasonal communities designation comes in too, with this. We, you know, they recognize that this is an issue for us. They want to just put something in place that addresses that.
Thank, thank you, Rachel. So ongoing, I mentioned earlier, just the property management and maintenance, again, a big. Piece of what Rachel's been doing is really, you know, we need to manage the properties we have. That's, that's working with the tenants. Coordinating maintenance with our, with our in-house staff and so. I think we've been doing an outstanding job with the, with the resources we have and again, knowing that some of these. Some of these properties have some issues and until we kind of figure out the full plan, what we're going to do forward, you know, things will come into place. So we've been doing a great job, I think, keeping things together. And again, this goes back to the bigger picture of. A more comprehensive way of doing this, you know, doing these things. So, you know. Jackie, myself, Rachel, Rich, we're meeting regularly, brainstorming, working through all these things. Trying to coordinate as best, you know, coordinate these things. So that's ongoing. And then additional items, you know, I know questions have arisen about. Tea Time and the interim uses and we can have a discussion on that. Housing workshop, Rachel is working on trying to coordinate a workshop that we could have here in Eastham with the. Yeah, Massachusetts Housing Partnership, where we could talk about the fair housing laws, talk more about. Get a better understanding of the lottery, why, you know, why we need to do that, what it, what the purpose is, how it works, what we can and can't do. As far as local preference, so we're trying to set that up really as soon as possible, but just depending on when we can get the folks from. Mass Housing Partnership to.
Yeah, I think we're looking at early next year with that.
But that would be open to boards and committees and members of the public and it will help us be able to walk through intelligently what. We can and can't do.
Right.
Before we spend money.
And the last thing here is just the, the county has started a shared regional housing services pilot program. That's being run through the County Human Services Department and they've partnered with the consulting firm at Barrett Planning Group. This was, this is basically an assistance, housing assistance program funded initially through ARPA. Year, it's a two year program, two year pilot program. So year one was last year and they were basically getting. The, the framework in place for how this would work, but essentially it will, it provides. It provides consulting services to the towns and housing, regional housing partners. And in the county. The office, it's a combination of things. So technical assistance, some legal question assistance. Office hours if you need assistance and then they're working on creating a database of housing information and. And state called it groups and things like that. So this is a, we're in year two. And I believe that the county will be looking to the towns to see if this is something that. They want to sustain and funding source for that. I know we've, Rachel sat in on a few meetings on this and we have. So I should mention. Each town has a certain number of hours allotted, so we can use those for whatever we need to and then you can kind of pay for additional. Assistance as needed. So right now, we're just in the pilot phase where we're using our allotted. Office hours, if you will, to get some technical assistance where needed on. Things related to the programs we've been talking about, so. I don't know if there's anything, did I hit everything on that? That's pretty much where we are.
The only thing I want to add is, as Paul said, you know, they're going to be looking to the towns. To see if they want to continue this program, so. They'll, they're looking to do an intermunicipal agreement and that's something they've been developing over the past year, I believe as well. So I think there will be more to come on that.
Alright, thank you. So just a couple more slides. Recommendations, kind of want to summarize what we've gone through here, so.
Can I just do a back background frame for this? Okay, so what we're looking for is nothing permanent. Because we don't have continued funding for anything. What we're looking for right now is if we have, and we think we do, four hundred and fifty thousand or so. To pilot one, two, three or four programs. Which ones do you want to prioritize to pilot? So that we can get the best bang for our buck and really test out a couple of things and see whether if they work. Then we can ask Town Meeting for continued funding or we can try and find a funding source for them somewhere else, but. But at least we'll know, you know, like Province Town, Province Town can now say, we've created nineteen new units of rental housing. That's available now with this much money that we spent. So I think that's a really good data point. So anyway, that's, that's what we're trying. So anyway, that's that's what we're trying to set up for you tonight.
So basically, these are, you know, these are the recommendations based on our staff review. And again, this is up for discussion. And we want feedback from the board to see how how we might proceed. So we we think the lease to locals program. Is a great model. Again, it's got a track record so far of success with with P Town in Antucket. It addresses the number one housing need, which is the lack of year-round rentals. And there's opportunities to partner with with Orleans, maybe make it a regional program. So we think that. Is a worthwhile effort to pilot the ADU assistance program. Again, this also addresses the number one need year-round rentals. There's a lot of tie-ins, as I mentioned, with if we get the pre-approved plans, there will be some incentives built into the state housing. Regulations and this again creates new units, smaller units. So we're trying to diversify the housing stock, which we need. So we need small units for downsizing and small units for folks to just get into, get a foothold. So that would. We feel that's a viable program.
And in the state plan, there is money set aside for incentives for lower income households for ADUs. Which I think will be a nice other option.
Again, rooted ventures, we think is a viable program, you know, maybe going into a secondary year after, you know, if we were to do lease to locals. And that was successful, that's something we think is viable and doable, just a matter of when we would phase it in. And just looking at the kind of switching over to the projects, you know, so Massa Soyit. Road, we are, you know, kind of underway, so we obviously feel we should continue with that program, that project. Continue to investigate the funding and bring that to fruition and bring those two units, rental units online and I, you know, I. I don't, I didn't mention this on the slide, but obviously the first floor is where the Friends of Eastham COA have their operation, which is. You know, really vital component to the community and to the COA operation. So that was another reason we wanted to repurchase that property. Make sure they had a base of operations to continue. So obviously refitting this whole building and part of that is refitting the first floor. Making sure we can maximize the space that the Friends group has to work with. So we would recommend we do keep moving forward with that project. And again, the other two projects, as I mentioned, they're, you know, we're we're in. You know, we're kind of. The the train has kind of left the station on there and we do think those projects are worthwhile. We should continue on that. The tax exemption program, as Rich mentioned, not recommending that. And again, based on what what Rich was explaining, we think that's not a great fit and it would actually be counterproductive to. If we were doing the lease to locals program. And then finally, the last three programs, again, I just kind of. No real recommendations. Like we said, we just, we're still. Mortgage mortgage and housing buy down, they're good programs, just not viable. Doesn't mean that we should abandon them, but maybe postpone, hold off on a while. Again, things may change or depending on funding availability. And then finally, the deed restriction, we just need more. Need more information. So once we hear back from the CDP and what their findings are, we'll be able to have a better conversation on that.
And we love those programs. So it's not like we're saying we don't want to do them. It's what we're saying is we need a funding source for them. And when they kind of took out that. Transfer tax out of the housing bill, it eliminated some of the funding that we could have used for that. So we just have to find another funding source and we will, we will. It's just that right now. With just a little seed money, we can't justify those programs at the moment. And it's heartbreaking because we've had, you know, I know in the past few years, we've had people ask for, you know. That little bit that they needed for the down payment or that. So anyway.
So. Thank you all for your patience. That was a lot of content to get through and basically this point kind of turned over to discussion. Again, like Jackie said, we're kind of looking for feedback, guidance, what the board feels about these programs and projects and. And we won't be able to get through everything tonight, but this is the first step and we can then come back at a subsequent.
Right, so would hopefully we, once we get a sense of where you guys are, we can come back to you with specifics like. Working on eligibility and regulations and the amount of money we'd need for certain of these, but.
Shocking on this slide at the after the end about development costs.
We're throwing that in there because, you know, it is, it is just, you know, it's. Shocking. And when you talk about, you know, we even when we talk about two and a half million dollars for five units across the street, it's. It's expensive, yes, but it's. It's right up there with the, you know, the housing costs. It's just we don't have funding sources. But there is in the Affordable Housing Act, some specific money for smaller developments too. So, you know, we might want to just move some of these along and then pause. I know everyone hates to pause, but the programs, my intent was to get the programs out there so that you could have something. That we're working on until we get some of the brick and mortar in place. Does that make sense? And get twenty new year-round rentals in the next year or two, then that would actually. Be awesome.
All right, open up to the board, questions, comments?
Let's just make a comment. I think the recommendations are on the right track. I mean, the rental, creating more rental units year round. In the front of the stack and in the back is kind of purchasing assistance with purchasing homes. I think that's kind of. A good one to put in the back burner for now. But I like the way you've prioritized it.
Sure.
Yeah, the recommendations, are they in your rent, your staff rank order?
Are they in your what?
Are they ranked prior?
Your rank order.
Oh.
Order.
Not necessarily.
No.
It's.
They're not. Okay, I was just asking whether looking at this, whether there's some.
I think the top two, we all agree the top two are really good viable options. And we'd like to put some money.
Right, you get rather quick bang. Now, what happens the bottom three of your recommendations? The one that you're saying, yes, that we that we've already, we're on the road for those three already. For Massa Soyit, Salt Pond and Beach Plum. I mean, is that. Looking for guidance from us, whether not to say.
Yes.
Put a pause on those because we would like to put the money elsewhere.
Well, no, there is no money elsewhere, so.
Cause they came from, a lot of it came from CPA funds.
CPA funds. So basically, I think we'd like to test out our logic with you on Massa Soyit Road. So right now, we think we have enough money to do the external renovation and to do fire suppression. Fire suppression is essential to renting out those apartments. So we could just do that piece and then we'd have fire suppression, the thrift shop and one apartment. But as we were sitting, talking about it as staff, that site is so tiny and just watching what happened with the. Town hall renovation, if we have to do the exterior and then come back in two or three years to do that top floor. Does that make any sense? Doesn't it make sense to just wait, go back to CPA, see if we can get some. Housing money to do that top floor apartment and then, yes, that would delay us another season. But then we'd have it done and we'd have two units instead of one.
Okay.
So that was our thinking, but I again, you know, we're kind of in this now, so we wanted your your thoughts. At a different level, looking at it, because I know people are shocked at the the price of it, but. We did save a historic, you know, we saved a historic structure, we upgraded it and we're keeping it safe. And we're adding the fire suppression and we're getting two housing units and those will be affordable.
Right, now we're. Let me, if can may I ask a question of affordable housing? Do we, what are the. Funds available CPA funds available within for affordable housing? To put into the. Five eighty Massa Soyit Road, additional stuff for the, for a third apartment on the third floor. I mean, what are we looking at in a sense? My my fear is Carolyn, is that we go to CPA funds so often that suddenly there aren't any.
They don't have any money.
Well, first of all, I'm not on the CPA committee this year, so I know you're looking at me for an answer, but I really, I think. Rich is the one that knows the finances of the and Paul of the CPA committee better.
Just, you were always on, that's why I apologize when I was on it, but I'm not on it either.
Lane is currently on it.
Ah, there we go.
Okay, I understand. All right.
But we did use the CPA, the seven forty for the historic rehab. But it'd be roughly that much again.
Yes.
For housing.
For the housing, yes.
Right.
So it's.
Two units.
Yeah.
Two, right.
Two units.
Which is.
That's still less than five thousand.
It's less, yes. Exactly.
And and the CPA last year and I, and I think reading between the lines, Rich can correct. But it seems like the recommendation at the CPA will again be to fund whatever the projects are that come before the CPA. And reserve the remaining chunk for housing.
Yeah, yes, I I'm aware of that.
We are still saving up for those big.
Okay.
Right, and CPA in its five-year plan has. Decided to prioritize housing in general, so a larger percentage of the.
Beyond the ten, 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 ten.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll go towards housing just off the top anyways. So so we've put some mechanics in the CPA committee realized, you know, it's housing. That's what's needed to address what's coming forward. So I think we have some good mechanisms in place to prioritize housing.
And I guess the only thing I would add to all that discussion, which we haven't talked to the CPC about yet really, but it would, you know, we'll have, we have to have that discussion. Given that you've got multiple projects and a need for ongoing funding for different things, which CPC CPA could be a piece of that. Do you want to, we historically have paid cash for everything. You could also do bonds and use CPA mon funds to pay the debt service as well. Depending on the interest rate and the cost of borrowing and all that stuff, so.
Now, is it with that, using bonds, etc., would that be a decision by the committee?
Yes.
So, but for us, the idea would be, do we put in an application for? Right, because this has to be, we, you have to, you put an application in the CP.
Right, that's the question tonight or next.
We put the application in for this. The third to third floor apartment. I mean, they get two apartments out of five eighty.
So we can put in a. We can put in a placeholder application, just timing wise, we can put in a placeholder application, but we're, what we're hoping to is the timing worked out. So we can actually put some bid specs out, get a real number for what it would be, then put that directly into the CPA. So we have, you know, a real number, but, you know, so we have time to have this discussion, everything.
Now, any of the others, do are we, do we have CPA fund possibility of the, in anything in the other two? I mean, that depends on whether we keep them on affordable housing or not.
Well, I think the Salt Pond is going to, if we move forward with wastewater. Moving forward with the Salt Pond condos gives us a pump station at the perfect elevation. To serve a lot of the home, so we have a whole new little area right around Salt Pond that we can serve without grinder pumps. And expensive other treatment. So it's of of good value for us. So we'll probably be asking for a taking and that requires us to purchase the other two units, to assess them and purchase them. So there'll be a cost to that.
Would we buy the land and also?
We'll have everything. And that right now, I mean, we were going to check, but my guess is we have at least fourteen or fifteen bedrooms. On that site right now with the current septic system. If that had wastewater, that would be attractive to a developer because it it. It could be a great mixed-use housing development and it has, you know, those upper floors have views of Salt Pond. It's it's beautiful up there.
Mixed income.
Yes, mixed income. Sorry.
Yeah, no retail in the.
No retail, no retail, mixed income.
But that, and and that would be not be CPA funds, that would be Eastham funds.
I don't, I, we don't know, and that would be up to you guys, but what we were thinking is that site might be particularly attractive. To a developer because they could get more units there. So we might, it might be one of those ninety-nine year leases. Where a developer would come in and do the site and we would just have to decide on the income.
Yeah, not unlike, if if you read in the paper, what Orleans is doing at the old motel.
Governor Prince.
Governor Prince Motel, where they're doing mixed incomes. So some are going to be affordable, some are going to be workforce, some are going to be homeownership.
Yeah.
Opportunities and they're mixing it all together to create a small little community that has some diversity to it. And some of that's going to be through the developers, some of it will be the low in, the affordable ones, probably will have some tax credit stuff with it. So there's a whole diversity of funding that's possible, including CPA.
Yeah, and it would be a great site for that. I I really think we could.
First, we need to own it.
I think the ownership, the bottom line is owning it is going to be a bond to purchase.
Yes.
Through our own funds.
We could do some waste, maybe some wastewater money.
It's part of our wastewater project.
Yeah, that's that's true.
And then the subsequent stuff, as Carolyn was mentioning, some sort of, if you have a developer do it, there's some sort of capital stack and CPA funds might be a piece of that. To subsidize the affordable units.
How big is the lot?
It's, it's not that the lot is big, I forget.
I mean.
I don't know.
I don't even think it's like three acres. I think there's a wetland on it that limits it too, but. You know, just the grandfathering alone. And those are, I guess what I also wanted to say, those are not typical duplex units. They're absolutely huge. Each single unit is huge and could be broken up into at least two, maybe three in some cases.
And to Rich's point about bonds, the CPC committee, I I forget exactly when, but eight, ten years ago. Purchased a number of pieces of property that we now have through the town as affordable housing through the bond process.
Yeah.
And then what they, what they do is they dedicate a certain amount of CPA funding every year to pay the debt service. But it's a great way to.
Yeah.
To leverage the CPA money, particularly in the time when bond, when interest rates are at good levels.
Hopefully getting better.
Well, the final on the bottom three, the three there, that we started on Beach Plum, that's would be right at the moment. We own the property and we have a septic.
And we have a tenant in the house.
We have a tenant in the house and we're looking to get four more units in back, whichever design we use, it fits. And we need to, but that that funding would come from, we could do a a bond from the town. Or if we wanted to make some of it affordable under the capital A affordable and try and look for CPA funds or whatever. But it's basically likely, we're we're thinking about workforce type housing there, right?
We're trying, we're trying that. And I think there are some things in the new housing bill that I just looked at today that might be attractive. It, they talk about, you know, one to four units of housing. There's money set aside for those. So what I'd like to do on that one is see if we could squeak by with some of the capital funding we have now. Just to do the architectural plans from twenty-five percent to a hundred percent. That way, they'd be ready, they'd be, we'd be ready to go out to bid, but we wouldn't actually go out to bid because we won't have a funding source. And we don't want to ask town meeting for that right now, so. But to be ready, shovel ready is awesome when there are other funding sources available, so.
I like personally, I like the design with all of it in the back behind.
I do too. Yeah, I didn't think I would.
Put anybody on Route six.
Right.
And it 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 is a brilliant design, I have to say. SV Designs did this. And when you look at it from the road, the road, it it looks like there's a little maybe a wing on the house. It doesn't really, the first house.
Yeah.
Hovers the second house and he has entrances on the front and the side. So there's no entrances going in the back where the abutters are. It was just, I think it's beautifully designed.
Well, thank you. I apologize to everyone for taking so much time on that. Sit back now.
So we pay the big bucks.
Yeah.
Our attorney.
Right.
Suzanne?
Um, I would love to continue to move forward with the things that we have in the works. Uh, that one seems rather easy. I like the idea of the ADU Assistance Program because my understanding of it is that before really you could go to the bank to mortgage against your property, you need to get all of this engineering site work done. And at least for my family, that was like the starting starter right there of like, where am I gonna, like, could mortgage the property, but I would need $5,000, $10,000.
Just to find out.
Just to find out what it would be and so on and so forth. So I think that that is probably going to be a useful incentive. Um, the lease to local program, I would love it to be more than, I, more than a year. I, I'm interested in stably housing people and a year lease is not stable housing, even three years isn't really like stable housing. You have three years to plan or maybe do something different, but it just, it goes by so quickly. And I don't want to put people in a position where they're like, sweet, I finally found a year-round rental and then, oh, I have to move again.
But I think we'll have the benefit of soon, like even if we could start this, if you say so, as early as like the spring. But we'll have the benefit now of what, what's happened in other places.
Yeah.
And what happens, I think, is that the confidence for renters is built up so that the landlords have more confidence. And once they stick, once they do it and they're making a good amount of money and they don't have to do the cleaning and the turnovers and all, then I think they might convert over. And that's, I think that's the hope of it. We'll see from the statistics when we get them from other communities.
Yeah, I think we heard, um, I don't, I think we might even actually have some of the statistics, statistics, but informally, we heard that, um, three conversion rate to maintaining the year-end rental in year two, even without subsidy was pretty strong.
Okay.
And I, and we can do, you know, I, I.
That would be the transfer into the rooted rentals, rooted renters program.
So would it just be?
So we could still give them some subsidy.
And then maybe the subs, the subsidy wouldn't be every single subsequent year, is that?
Well, if they then joined the rooted renters program, then there might be another subsidy.
Okay.
The problem is committing to this for multi-years when you only have
450.
A fixed amount of money, right? So we don't have a dedicated funding source. So unless we carve out some sort of, you know, tax levy space or some other funding source to have it go, it's hard to plan in multiple years unless you use, you know, you cost down what you planned to do year one, just to accommodate a second year in which you might influence how successful you are in year one. So.
What was the idea that if you, you would pilot it for a year and then hopefully they would just keep on without the incentive? Is that the idea?
That's, that's an idea. The other idea is that we would, we would then get a recurring funding source to continue the program so that we could continue to recruit.
And keep and retain.
And keep recruiting and retaining. Yes.
And that could work in conjunction with the ADU Assistance Program really well too.
Yeah.
Because now you're offering incentive to build the structure that doesn't exist. And then you're also incentivizing that to be a year round. Well, it would be deed restricted to be a year round.
And then if you,
only if they take the, the second money.
Second.
Okay. The building money.
Okay.
But you could, if they didn't take that, you could tend, then look at the lease to local program.
And you know, our hope too is that we'll get some.
They can weave together so that like each program helps the other one builds.
Yeah.
Programs could weave together. I,
Right.
I can't resist. I, we were talking about this when we were, but if you had the lease to local, that's giving the funds to the property owner, the landlord, incentivize that. Obviously, we want the rents have to be, you know, reasonable. We hope they would be, but even if still like they match up with a renter, if that, the renter still had a gap, potentially they could enroll in the Rental Assistance Program, which is a three-year program.
And then it helps.
Right. So then that could be a way, so there's ways to, the programs weave together for the landlord and the renter, but that would be a way, you know, if it's successful, we get into a year two, year three with the lease to locals. Maybe that's where we can kind of make it so that the lease to local is a three-year commitment, maybe, you know, because we have, it's being bolstered by the three-year commitment from the RAP program. And when the landlords see that, again, that's a steady, it's a steady, even keeled way to rent the property and relieves a lot of headaches from doing the seasonal, you know, the, the weekly turnovers and all that.
I, I.
The hourglass three on the bottom, it gives us some time to get the data from CDP's consulting study and see what the market bears. And then if we have to, if we do the lease to locals program and, and we find that then successful, then we can package together some things to get a funding source for.
I, I think, um, I like this, it, the ADU and lease to local possibly complementing, complementing each other because the cost to build an ADU is really expensive at this point. And so.
It's the same as one of those little units.
And so like at this point, you're like, well, okay, most people I feel like are building it for family because you couldn't, it wouldn't be affordable at that point if you wanted to put it on the market. Um, so I, I'm into that. I will say I really like the idea of a housing buy down and the mortgage assistance program because the cost per unit is less, is significantly less. And then also, you know, before the pandemic, I think Wellfleet did have some luck with that program at the lower cost and I worry that in like five to 10 years, we're going to be like, oh man, we really should have done it when it was $200,000 because now it's more. And so I just, I'm glad that you guys are interested in it and I hope we find a way for those.
Yeah. The only reason it's on hold is because the market changed so drastically and we would have piloted it if we could have. But if you wanted, you know, if we could get, the way I look at it, if, if with this money, we could get 10 year-round rentals through lease for locals and five ADUs. And it looks like we're keeping a good pace with the ADU development. So if we could get 15 new units of rental housing for the same amount of money that we'd pay for one mortgage buy down.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know, just for right, for that decision alone.
And it would be good to have them all. It's just, we can't fund them all. So.
I guess I.
We want them all.
I do want them all. I just feel.
No, we, we agree. We agree with you.
Anxiety about it. We need a benefactor.
But funding is, I mean, funding is, you know, as you go through the budget process and, and setting priorities for the town and for next year, funding is the issue. You know, these are all good programs and we would like to do all of them. One other program, not program, but opportunity that we have that the trust is beginning to try to explore is there, there is town-owned land, small parcels, very small parcels of town-owned land that maybe there are opportunities for public-private opportunities so that it's not the town having to spend all of the money for the development for, for making the program happen and being responsible, as, as Jeff was saying, being responsible for the ongoing maintenance and management. So we're also trying to take advantage of what little pieces of land that we have. We had a, a really good workshop between the trust and the open space committee, talking about parcels that maybe we could do joint projects. So we're, we're trying to look at some of that. There's nothing to report on that now, but it certainly is an opportunity to try and move forward. Because little bits and pieces add up. You know, each one of these that we're talking about, a family is a family.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're, we're short the new housing production plan, we're short 575 units. And we have the lowest SHI rate of anybody on the middle and, I mean, of the lower and outer Cape. So we're in worse shape, perhaps you could say than some of the other towns. So even the one-tease and two-seize are going to help us while we wait for the bigger projects to, to come along. We don't want to be last anymore.
And the real estate transfer fee, it, that's dead. We're never.
Dead for now.
For now, but.
I mean, it's like the third time it's been brought up. So.
Yeah. Yeah.
Eventually, I'm sure.
Well, they just did this big whole thing. So it seems like it'd be hard to get it in next year.
They want to see what it's going to look like.
But again, I mean, I know that there are going to be some great opportunities for us because we are poised in so many different ways. I mean, there's a whole piece in the new housing legislation about mixed use, mixed income development, both that will be perfect for tee time in Towns of Plaza. So you know, there's a, there's a lot of opportunities. We just don't know when those are going to drop and how much funding will be spread across the state on them and but if we're ready to pivot in any one of those directions, and I think we, we will be, then, you know, we'll be able to take advantage as they come up.
Yeah, I think we will have three projects that are shovel-ready. If we proceed with the, the plans and the documentation, we'll have programs in place that could be bolstered and we'll have the zoning in place for the tee time in the north. And so those are important components when we're going to have to, you know, get into grant rounds and try to vie for this. This is all the, this is all the pre-work to get us set.
So what do you, what do you need from us tonight?
You need, yeah.
I mean, I think we all agree, we like the sort of you lay that out as priority list. We all seem to like the right, you know, the order.
It's like a money printing press.
Yeah. We just need, we just need a printing press.
We'll come back at your next meeting with some details.
Sound good to everyone?
That sounds good. Thank you so much. This is a lot of work.
Thank you.
Nice job.
A lot of heavy lifting.
No, this is great. It was easy to digest and understand the different programs. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think I would move, recommend a motion to adjourn the Affordable Housing Trust meeting. All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Where adjourn? I'll just wave by to you.